Just ask for a moment's assignments before we start our live broadcast. Thank you. Mr. President, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you, and good morning to everyone. We're gonna get started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance indicate that you are present and say a couple of other words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bath.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and citizens of Philadelphia.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and city of Philadelphia.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gattie.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the city of sisterly love.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, city of Philadelphia, and happy Teachers Appreciation Week.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, sending loves and prayers out to all the families who have lost loved ones or sisters gone bounce.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, colleagues and viewing public, I'm present.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez.
Good morning, good morning, in the spirit of celebration, thank you, Council President, and happy Mother's Day weekend to all.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Squilla.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, present.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas.
Morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to the listening public.
Morning, Councilman.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all. We've just established a form and will now want to come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Nicholas O'Rourke of the Living Water United Church of Christ. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Brooks. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Pastor, please proceed.
Let us pray. Good morning, Council President. Good morning, council members. Good morning, Philadelphia. Good morning, God. For this amazing day, first, we give thanks. For the leaping green leaves, the spirit of day in trees, for the true blue dream of sky. For all that is natural and infinite, for all that is temporal and mortal. We delight that in all things, all places and spaces, your presence is resident, hiding in plain sight if we but have eyes to recognize you, if we have but the willingness to pay attention. We recognize today the need to lift up in mindfulness and prayer our city and all who labor to keep it going and all who struggle to improve it. We pray for every worker that staffs the doors of the northeast entrance of City Hall, every secretary that crosses the Ts and dots the Is of every important document that is passed, every custodian that polishes the floor of these hallowed halls and dispenses the waste that we leave behind. We pray for such persons as Modesto Cruz and the support team that make all of this happen, for Michael Decker and his support. We pray for every chief of staff who keeps the offices and the outreach alive and makes the work of our officials even possible. And we pray for Darryl, for Mark, for Kenyatta, for Jamie, for Curtis, for Bobby, for Maria, for Cindy, for Sherrell, for Brian, for Kendra, for Alan, for Derek, for Kathy. We pray for Helen, for David, and for Isaiah. We pray for every councilperson and their constituents that are drawing their month-long fast to a close. We pray that they reap the benefits of their faithfulness to Allah. We pray that those benefits spill over into our city, that we have healing and justice in our city and safety. Safety not just in word, not just in sight, but safety that we can feel. Provoke, oh God, within our elected leaders here assembled on this call. Provoke within them a sensitivity to racism and sexism in our interactions, our remarks, and most importantly, in our policymaking and our systems. Provoke within them a sensitivity so acute that speaks, that causes proactive action and not just reactive lament. We pray for long-term investment, long-term investment in the radical reimagining of city planning that prioritizes compassionate legislating. We cause and we ask for you to cause us to grow and to learn to not react with offense to efforts, however loud or raucous, that are fueled by a vision of creating a compassionate city out of the hearts of compassionate people. We pray that our leaders' hearts break for the things that break your heart, oh God, to learn not to be weary in well-doing, but to learn to walk and agree with you. And may each official here see in what they do the work that they put forward, the very astonishing beauty of their souls. From every tradition, we reach to you, for we understand you in our ways, but you understand us all because you hear us all. By many names we call you, most of us just call you God. We say, Ashe, Ameen, Ameen, and Ameen.
Pastor, thank you so much for that invocation, we really appreciate it, thank you so much. Moving to our next order of business is the approval of the Journal, the meeting of Thursday, April 29, 2021, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the Journal, the meeting of Thursday, April 29, 2021, be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved in properly, second, that the Journal, the meeting of Thursday, April 29, 2021, stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and our Journal is approved, and our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communications, and the Chair asks the clerk, please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the President, to members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 7th Council-Matic District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fees simple titled to such properties, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1329 South 15th Street located in the 2nd Council-Matic District, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for industrial development for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1101 Market Street, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Kingston Street, I-95, East Venango Street, and Bath Street, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Richmond Street, East Butler Street, I-95, and Castor Avenue, commonly known as 3721 Richmond Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our communication, and our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And just by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would like to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers six bills entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of the 6400 block of Somerville Avenue, and an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Lowvers Avenue between East Uppsala Street and East Quarter Street, and an ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on North 3rd Street, both sides, between West Erie Avenue and West Sedgley Avenue, and an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on West 65th Avenue, both sides, between North Front Street and North 2nd Street, and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 12th Street and Champlin Street, 69th Avenue and North 12th Street, Comac Street and Champlin Avenue, Park Avenue and Negro Avenue, North 13th Street and Alney Avenue, and an ordinance amending Section 13101 of the Philadelphia Code entitled fixing and regulating rates and charges to modify the remedies and enforcement provisions and make technical changes.
Thank you, those six bills just read by the clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 5th Council-Matic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Next week's calendar.
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution urging the Pennsylvania State Legislature and Governor Tom Wolf to reject House Bill 972, intended to prohibit transgender athletes from participating in high school and/or collegiate sports according to their gender identity.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers two bills entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to convey to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Kingston Street, I-95, East Venango Street, and Bath Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of the parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Richmond Street, East Butler Street, I-95, and Castor Avenue, commonly known as 3721 Richmond Street.
For the committee.
Councilman Jones offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring West Philadelphia and Winfield native Chaka Tony on being drafted to the Washington Football Team in the 2021 NFL Draft.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two bills and three resolutions entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 152 by striking from the city plan 67th Street from Upland Street towards terminus northwardly therefrom.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 17107 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contractors Labor Management Relationships to create a new classification of covered airport service employees to receive prevailing wages, to extend prevailing wage requirements to third-party contracts with city-related agencies, lessees, and sublesses of the city, recipients of city financial assistance, and purchasers of city property.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1329 South 15th Street located in the 2nd Council-Matic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring Equal Justice Initiative founder Brian Stevenson for his lifelong pursuit of justice, vindicating the rights of the accused and fighting mass incarceration.
Councilman Johnson, does you want to be recognized on this resolution or the next one?
Next one.
Alright, thank you. Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing Philly Truce for its work to end gun violence and further acknowledging May 8 as Philly Truce Day.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that a resolution regarding Philadelphia Philly Truth Day be added to today's final passage calendar.
Can you be questioned for the suspension of the rules?
Yes.
Yeah, can we get a second?
Second.
It has been moved in properly, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
Also, Council President, I just want to just make brief remarks regarding prevailing wage bill that I introduced today to support workers at the Philadelphia International Airport. We have seen during this health pandemic the disparities that have significantly impacted people of color, and so this particular bill will provide healthcare for those essential workers who are on the front line working at the Philadelphia International Airport. We know that the workers at the airport are the backbone and cornerstone of keeping the Philadelphia International Airport moving forward, and so the bill will provide an opportunity for them to receive benefits as relates to a prevailing wage, but most importantly, the cornerstone is healthcare coverage, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for signing on, for co-sponsors, and also particularly yourself as well, Council President. If we have learned, if we have learned anything during this pandemic, that healthcare is along the lines of a civil rights issue, and no individual should be have, should have to go to work, put their lives on the front line in the midst of COVID-19, and bring back a virus that can potentially take the lives of their family members home without adequate healthcare coverage. And so I just want to thank you, Council President, for your support, as well as all of my other colleagues who also stepped up to the plate to support our essential workers at the Philadelphia International Airport. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Paul Street, Meadow Street, Kakawana Street, Worth Street, Pear Street, Gillingham Street, Josephine Street, Blair Street, and East Montgomery Avenue, and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1921, 23, 25, 27 East Somerson Street, 3022, 3024, 3026, 3028 North American Street, 2907 Grants Back Street, 413 West Norris Street, 419 West Norris Street, and 2152 North Randolph Street located in the 7th Council-Matic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Section 121133 of the Philadelphia Code entitled All-Terrain Vehicles to address off-road vehicle use in the city of Philadelphia.
Bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring the nonprofit organization The Block Gives Back for their successful youth internship program for 12- to 18-year-olds aimed at growing nonprofit operation skills and providing support for community events.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neil offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by revising certain provisions of Section 14514 entitled FNE, Far Northeast Overlay District.
For the committee.
Councilman Squilla offers one bill entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1101 Market Street.
Committee.
Councilman O offers two resolutions entitled a resolution calling on the city of Philadelphia to implement minimum force training for all law enforcement officers.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Highway Patrol Officer Andy Chan on his 25th anniversary of service in the Philadelphia Police Department.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other, no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green for report on the committee on finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, the committee on finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the committee on finance, to which is referred Bill Number 210203 entitled an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of one or more service agreements between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and/or one or more other city-related authorities relating to the financing of a neighborhood preservation initiative which includes housing, commercial corridors, and neighborhood infrastructure programs, approving the issuance by each such authority of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, including reimbursement obligations related to lines of letters of credit in one or more series to finance or refinance such initiative, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under each such service agreement. Respectful reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Hey, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210203.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved in properly, second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210203, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Thomas for report on the committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President, the committee on Streets and Services reports out seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 210286 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Haldeman Avenue, both sides, from Clark Street to Redline Road, and Bill Number 210287 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Tullmanson Road, both sides, from Busselton Avenue to Lindsay Street, and Bill Number 210288 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Brookmont Road, both sides, from Ferndale Street to Medway Road, and Bill Number 210289 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Bridle Road, both sides, from Brookmont Road to Park Ridge Street, and Bill Number 210290 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Chesworth Road, both sides, from Vary Road to Ferndale Street, and Bill Number 210291 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Ferndale Street, both sides, from Jean Street to Redline Road, and Bill Number 210292 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking and tollway zone regulations on Graymont Street, both sides, from Jean Street to Ferndale Street. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, the Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 210286, 210287, 210288, 210289, 210290, 210291, and 210292.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved in properly, second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210286, 210287, 210288, 210289, 210290, 210291, and 210292. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension that the rules have been deemed to have had its first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210395, 210397, 210398, 210399, 210400, 210401, 210402, 210403, 210404, 210405, 210406, and 210139-88. All other resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with the consideration of public comment, we will now take a brief five-minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect our speakers to our media. to give our technology professionals some time to connect our speakers to our meeting.
Mr. President, councilmembers and participants, we are now live.
Thank you, and good morning. Uh, we are now going to start our public comment process. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider public comment. The laws as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for a possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five six eight six three four oh six by three P M. The day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation and add you to the list. Uh, we will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Um, today, uh, I believe we will have three minutes to speak, uh, given the volume of individuals who have testified. Uh, but from time to time, based on that number, we may alter the time limit. Uh, today, we have three minutes. Uh, in order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, though, I do intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and you are asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, we will remind you of this. Uh, once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. And shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect our callbacks for public comment at the meeting. So please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded. And because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are considered to be recorded. Uh, Mr. Decker, I would ask, uh, you to please read the name of the first speaker on the list.
The first speaker is Mazie Casher, commenting on Philly Truth Day Resolution.
Good morning. Uh, just state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, members of the council, council president. My name is Mazie, M A Z Z I E, Casher, C A S H E R. Uh, thank you to, uh, Councilman Johnson for the opportunity and invitation. I would most certainly like to speak, uh, in favor of Philly Truth Day. I am the director of, uh, Philly Truth, Inc., the nonprofit behind the recently launched Philly Truth App. And we ask councilmen to, uh, help us with this declaration or proclamation because we feel that we need as a community to make a public declaration that, uh, we are going to stop fighting one another about what is the cause of gun violence, what is the problem, what is the solution? And we're going to work together to solve the problem. Take the, uh, idea that people are the problem out of the equation and make a public declaration. And among other things, on that day, we will ask those in attendance to take a pledge. Uh, particularly, we chose this day, the day before Mother's Day, because so many young people are dying and so many mothers are mourning the loss of young children. And we also wanted to make a gesture to the mothers that as a city, we are taking the pledge. The Philly Truth pledge reads, "This is my community. I am responsible for what happens here, how it looks here, and for what I do here." And it is our hope and intention that, uh, with the launch of the Philly Truth App, bringing together the many, uh, boots on the ground and various resources available both in government, private, and non-governmental sectors, we are turning the tide and turning the corner, uh, encountering the culture of violence here in Philadelphia. So that is, uh, my vote for, uh, Philly Truth Day. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Stephen Pickens, also commenting on Philly Truth Day.
Uh, good morning. Uh, just state your name for the record, but please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Pickens. I'm the co-creator of the Philly Truth App, along with my partner Mazie Casher. Uh, good morning, council president, um, distinguished council members, executives, clerks, and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce to you Philly Truth App. Philly Truth App is an innovative approach which will allow the people, organizations, and agencies who have worked tirelessly for years in violence prevention the ability to gain greater success by implementing technology as a means to reaching those who may not possess the mental capacity to make good decisions on their own accord. The Philly Truth Mobile App now gives us the advantage of being inside of the homes. And wherever critical decisions are being made in the absence of rational, logical, and relevant thinking is not taking place inside of our city. We urge you to visit phillietrus.com to become abreast on the various functions and conveniences the Philly Truth App stands to deliver. Catapulting violence prevention into the twenty-first century, we have given much thought and research to issues surrounding our communities and have arrived at this destination to giving the people their voices back again. When there was a time people talked and shared pertinent information to avert hazary, violence, and misconduct. So we are here today proudly to represent a movement, lifestyle, and change in culture that will blend the help in such a way each neighborhood can be touched at the same time by people, organizations, and agencies, uh, working in unison on the Philly Truth App. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Andrea Goldner, commenting on Philly Truth Day.
Good morning. Yes, hi, my name is...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name is, uh, my name is Andrea Goldner, and I come to you as a trained Philly Truth mediator. I want to talk to you today about the gun violence in our city and how it is impacting our children. I'm here to speak to you not out of self-interest, but as for the voice of our children. As a child advocate professional for over twenty-five years, it is clear to me and anyone that children in our city are not learning how to navigate potential violence properly. The result is that there are too many shootings, too many deaths, too many children losing a parent, too many families losing brothers and sisters. Innocent children are literally getting caught in the crossfire. The result is both our children and the city of Philadelphia are being traumatized all by gun violence. We need to learn how to navigate conflicts without resorting to deadly force. It is time to look up, speak up, because we can save lives. Too many children feel that in order to solve a problem, they resort to violence instead of using their words. Philly Truth has taken a huge leap into creating a solution to this problem. The Philly Truth App has the potential to make real change in the violence currently plaguing our city. Philly Truth is designed to bring opposing parties together through a trained mediator to de-escalate a dispute before it turns to violence. This app can be easily downloaded on any phone. All a person needs to do is download the app on their cell phone, hit the get help button, text a few words about the problem, and a trained mediator will respond. The intention is to help us all get in front of the conflict before it escalates into violence and to get the community engaged in the solution. It's time to stop this cycle, and we need to start somewhere. This app can be a part of the solution. We need total community buy-in, and we need your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sarita Lewis, commenting on Philly Truth Day.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please proceed with your name for the record.
Absolutely. Good morning, my name is Sarita Lewis. I am a native Philadelphian, and I love my city. I love it in the midst of a global pandemic, and I love it in the midst of the rampant gun violence that is plaguing our city and just, you know, really impacting our children and our, and our communities. Um, I do still see us as the city of brotherly love and the city that loves you back. We are a city in crisis, but we are peopled by citizens with hope and belief that we can make real change. Uh, it is that belief that took Philly Truth from being an idea to a reality. And it is the belief of Philly Truth's creators and us, and the citizens of Philadelphia, that we could actually be able to create a space where we are a part of our own healing. And it is with that that I'm excited to say that I am a trained mediator with Philly Truth. Um, and I am a part of the act process right now. Uh, Philly Truth allows for governmental and community groups to support our community members in real time and create a pause at the beginning of crises so that we can gain clarity of thought over the challenges that they're facing through conversation and mediation. And the hope is to be able to take it from mediation to actually really creating some healing in our neighborhoods so that there is no longer going to be the amount, the amount of fear that our citizens, that our children, that our parents and grandparents feel when they're walking the streets. I absolutely back us creating this space for Philly Truth Day, and I hope that you will support it as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Laura Song, commenting on two one oh three nine nine.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Council President, they are not online.
Okay, we move to the next one.
Next speaker is Marcia Hinton, commenting on two one zero three nine eight.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony. Ms. Hinton?
I'm sorry, technology issue. My apologies. My name is Marcia Hinton. Greetings extended to the members of Philadelphia City Council. I am the executive director of the Alumni Association of the Philadelphia High School for Girls. It is our distinct pleasure to offer an endorsement of resolution two one zero three nine eight honoring Lisa Misi, the twentieth principal of the Philadelphia High School for Girls. Mrs. Misi has embraced the Alumni Association as an active and valued partner in school activities. We bookend the school. From assisting with the first-ever new student interviews that she instituted to partnering in creating a memorable commencement for those graduating seniors last year, the class of twenty twenty, who were forced to forego many of the traditional graduation exercises because of the coronavirus. Principal Misi ensures her faculty and students instructional environment is focused on continuous improvement. Every decision she makes is with the good of her students in the forefront. She models and promotes respect among her peers and students alike. Most importantly, Principal Misi shares her knowledge and expertise with her staff and colleagues. She does not ask of her faculty and staff anything more than she would do. Instead, she is a hands-on leader. She can be found leading the charge with her sleeves rolled up, shoulder to shoulder with her staff. She is creative, innovative, and inspires others to be the best version of themselves. It is with our distinct pleasure that we can offer no better candidate for your recog, for your recognition. And we suggest wholeheartedly that you approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for, very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Uh, that concludes our public comment session. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Uh, Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of resolution number two one zero three ninety-five?
A resolution urging the United States House of Representatives to pass House Resolution twenty-five fifty-three, also known as the Real Estate Valuation Fairness and Improvement Act of two thousand twenty-one.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero three ninety-seven.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to certain sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and buildings they're on situated in the seventh council-matic district.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero three ninety-eight.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia High School for Girls principal, Lisa Mezzi, on winning the, a two thousand twenty-one Lindbeck Award for Distinguished Principals.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all the girls of the Philadelphia High School for Girls, I move the adoption of the resolution. Wink it, Kisey wink it.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero three ninety-nine.
A resolution recognizing May two thousand twenty-one as National Bike Month in the city of Philadelphia. A resolution recognizing May 2021 as National Bike Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair, again, recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just wanted to thank uh my colleague, Councilmember Jones, uh for getting me back on a bike after a long time for our tour in the 4th councilmatic district. And with that, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number 210400.
A resolution honoring Coach Willie Billy Boyd for an impactful life and coaching career on more than 35 years, mentoring hundreds of student athletes all across Philadelphia as owner and coach for positive image youth organizations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number 210401.
A resolution honoring Coach Paul Ripper for a life lived as an outstanding coach and mentor as a pillar of Philadelphia's basketball community.
Chair, again, recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number 210402.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 1st councilmatic district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Swill for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted. Uh, Councilman O, did you, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, I did, Council President. Uh, thank you very much. I, I may have made an error on my part in that I believe that the uh, the, the resolution recognizing the 25th anniversary of Officer Andy Chan, I did not um think it was going to uh be voted on next week, so um that's my mistake. But I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that um the uh resolution uh honoring Officer Andy Chan may be voted on today.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved in properly second that the resolution be voted on today. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everybody. I apologize. I, I uh made a mistake on that, but I thank you for your uh, your, your indulgent and support. Thank you.
We are all human, sir. Thank you, Council. Uh, okay, we're at uh, Mr. Decker, I think we're at 210403.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2013 East Tazza Street located in the 1st council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Swill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210404.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 8th councilmatic district.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number 410405.
A resolution proclaiming May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our country, state, and city.
Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210406.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Eileen Duffy Burne as the 2021 Pennsylvania School Nurse of the Year by the National Association of School Nurses and for a quarter century of serving and relentlessly advocating on behalf of student health and education justice for Philadelphia's children.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm for a motion.
Yes, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second that the resolution should be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted. Um, Court will please read the title of Bill number 210139 double A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Taxes and Rent General by adding required conditions and information for reporting adjustments to taxable income.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, all in row.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, eyes of 17 and nays of zero. Majority of all members present voting in confirms that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have some additional resolutions for today?
A resolution recognizing Philly Truce for its work to end gun violence and further acknowledging May 8th as Philly Truce Day introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Council President. I want to also acknowledge um Councilwoman Cindy Bass and also Councilman Kendrick Brooks for working with the Philly Truce app um organizers. And I just believe that in the midst of the gun violence that we're seeing, we gotta go back to the basics and engage in community organizing. And this is an app that focuses on grassroots organizing as a way for us to address this issue of substance gun violence. And I also want to thank the co-sponsor who signed on to be supportive of their efforts. Council President, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Highway Patrol Officer Andy Chan on his 25th anniversary of service in the Philadelphia Police Department introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the option of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. Um. We will now move to our speeches. Just would like to say, prior to recognizing all the members, uh note to play record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. So with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Let's see, any? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to let people know that tomorrow uh the Council Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy will be holding a hearing on reopening and funding the um creative arts economy here in Philadelphia. Uh, it is a robust hearing uh and I promise to move through it uh quickly uh because we have eight panels. Um, but as you noted, Council President, we will start with two panels of technology that will go through what is available to uh remove COVID, to fight COVID, and to come up with screenings that identify who does or doesn't have COVID as part of how we can open up our city in full capacity. Uh, so I invite everybody to watch. We have some great uh people, including Grammy nominated folks and, and, and folks from all four of our committees, including uh the committee put together by Councilmembers uh Thomas and um Gilmore Richardson. Uh, so it promises to be a very um informative hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. We look forward to that information. Uh, speeches? Speech on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I know I've been a bit relentless on this topic um in the past few weeks. So I'm hoping after yesterday's hearing, you'll understand why I need to come back to the topic of vaccinations. This administration has failed to meet the moment and the consequence of failure is now becoming apparent for all of us to see. In less than two weeks, the suburbs of Philadelphia will open up for business, weddings, and sporting events. Their bars and restaurants will be fully opened. In short, life will be returning to a new normal in counties all around us. From Bucks to Chester, Montgomery to Delaware, Allegheny to Erie, Jersey Shore to the Poconos, the pandemic way of life will be fast disappearing in the rearview mirror except for Maskwell. But not for us. When the governor announced his plan to reopen, this administration said, we'll talk later. So where does that leave us? Businesses limited to two employees per 1,000 square feet, restaurants limited to 50% capacity, weddings will be capped at 75 guests, and our stadiums will be at less than 50% occupancy. And why is this happening? Yesterday, we all had a chance to ask Health Commissioner Farley where we stood on vaccine distribution. I asked Dr. Farley two very basic questions, at least I thought they were pretty basic. How many vaccines are we sitting on that we don't have the capacity to distribute? And number two, how many vaccines are our providers sitting on that they don't have the capacity to distribute? He could not answer either question. My concern is that we are currently sitting on hundreds of thousands of Pfizer vaccines that over the past six weeks, we have not had the capacity to administer. Had we administered these doses when we received them, we would be on track to meet the president's July 4th deadline. I've spent the past eight weeks trying to get straight answers from the Health Department. Yesterday, I was told not to worry about how many surplus COVID vaccines the city was sitting on because it was like worrying about how many extra measles vaccines the city has on hand. People are dying from measles. Grandparents are not skipping hugs from their grandchildren because of measles and businesses across the city are not forced to close down because of measles. We're now told that our failure is the fault of our constituents, that they're vaccine hesitant and it's a problem across the country. These are nothing but poor excuses, in my opinion, for the failure to plan. Our vaccine hesitancy rate is at 17%, 17%. One point higher than the state's vaccine hesitancy rate and two points lower than the national average. So it's hard for me to believe it's because our constituents don't want the vaccine. Yes, there's vaccine hesitancy in this country, but it's mostly prevalent in red states that don't even believe in the vaccines. Yes, in blue states like New York and New Jersey and in blue counties like our suburbs, the demand has plateaued. But the suburbs and neighboring states, they had a plan to scale up distribution as the vaccine supply scaled up. They were delivering their doses as they received them. And now, despite the plateaued demand, they're all on a path to meet President Biden's July 4th timeline. We started sitting on our doses weeks ago because we had no plan. Now it looks like we won't meet the president's timeline of July 4th. Yesterday, I called on the Department of Public Health to provide us with a written plan for spending the millions of dollars in new federal aid for vaccine distribution in Philadelphia. I was told to get it to me. I'm still waiting for the plan, but this plan should have been written months ago, ready to execute the minute federal dollars became available. I fear we're writing it as we speak and as our council body asks these questions. This plan should include a pathway for scaling up distribution in convenient drive-through and walk-up sites all over the city of Philadelphia. It should include an advertising campaign around these sites. And everywhere you turn, you should see it, something that's more than social media and Philadelphia accounts running, a phone bank. It's our sports and entertainment icons we can engage on TV and radio. If we ran a marketing campaign like a mayor's race in this town, people would see the ads. We would spend more money on media, we should spend more money on media than we collectively spent on our election campaigns. This is more important. That's what federal money should be used for at this point. On the 4th of July, soon, in the birthplace of liberty and freedom, let's not be the only city in America where freedom and liberty are still being held hostage to this pandemic. I hope this body continues to ask the questions we've been asking, but more importantly, I hope we get the answers our constituents deserve and that we quickly put a plan of action in place to meet President Biden's July 4th goal. On a separate note, I just want to wish all of my colleagues or moms Happy Mother's Day. And all the moms out there and all those who lost their mom this past year, uh like myself. And uh just remember the good memories of your mom and how great your mom helped you and moms are the best. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Thank you so much. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Yes, Council President. Um, I also want to wish all of the, the mothers um of the city uh Happy Mother's Day. Also, a shout out to those who lost their mothers as well and our prayers are with you, um including Councilmember Dom. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other speeches on behalf of the majority? Not seeing any. Um, well, I recognize Councilman Jones. I would also like to wish everyone, all those mothers uh including the wonderful, wonderful members of the city council of Philadelphia that are mothers. Uh, Happy Mother's Day. Uh, it is a special day. Um, no one should ever question why uh Mother's Day commercials and sales uh quadruple uh Father's Days commercials and sales on TV because mothers are very, very special. Uh, so I just want to say uh Happy uh Mother's Weekend uh to all of you all. And with that, uh Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Paradise lies at the feet of your mother. So with that, uh thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 13th, 2021 at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 13th, 2021 at 10:00 AM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, most who carries. Thank you all very much and please be safe. Thank you.